Was on.
I don't know if she can hear me.
Hi.
Hi Natasha. Yeah, I was gonna say, for purposes of tonight, you can be on video.
Okay.
Because you're the presenter and Jared.
I gotta figure out the lighting situation here. I think the light.
You got light shining on your head.
Yeah. Is that better?
Yeah, we're on TV, so.
Well, hopefully.
All right.
That works.
I'll just mute.
We're just waiting for Rodney to log in, okay? We're gonna have all you guys control your own mute buttons, okay? So when you're not talking, mute it, all right? It's a good habit to get it.
Hello, best now. John. Everyone.
Evening.
Pretty quiet. Beautiful night, isn't it, huh?
Long time no see.
Oh, I said no.
I just got a text from Rodney. He's just wrapping up a work thing. He'll be right off.
Natasha. I think we need speed bumps on this Andover Street. I almost got killed today. Maybe I oughta turn this around so you could see the cars spinning by.
So, I have heard that speeding has become a huge problem with the reduction in congestion just across the nation. So, solve one problem, end up with another.
Ah, I tell ya, it's unbelievable.
I was gonna bring up Wentworth Avenue. Been doing some walking down that avenue. And I've seen more trucks, and they're not coming down slowly. They're coming down really too fast. So, I'm sort of, talk to the manager and yourself about that.
Tell you the truth, they're trying to hit you, Bill.
I think, no, I think they were hitting at me. Yes, you're right.
I see Rodney's in there now.
Yep.
Okay. Like I said Rodney, everyone's gonna control their own mute button. So when you're not speaking, just mute it. It'll go a lot smoother. I'm ready when you are ready.
Okay, thank you. Sorry I'm late, everybody. I was wrapping up a wrapping up a work phone call. So, this is meeting the Transportation Subcommittee. The agenda item is a discussion of the proposed development in Tuxbury-Bowica, Home Depot e-commerce. Mr. Clark, please call a role.
Councilor Elliott.
Here.
Councilor Conway.
Here.
Councilor Samaras.
Here.
Three present.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us. I see we have Councilor Drinkwater, Councilor Noon, and a number of members of Planning and Development. I see the city manager, sorry, not a manager. Thank you for joining us and meeting on a short notice. I know this item was just discussed at the last city council meeting. I see the mayor's joined us. Just briefly, there is a project being developed in Tuxbury and Bowica that will have a significant traffic impact on roadways in Lowell. So that is the reason why the Transportation Subcommittee is discussing this. I do know that we all received a letter from the city manager and the traffic engineer relative to positions that the city has relative to the traffic. So, with that, why don't we just go through you, matter manager, and then the traffic engineer. I know that we've received correspondence in the last day or two that has been sent to the Tuxbury Planning Board. So I don't know, matter manager, you want me to go to you or directly to Natasha to let folks know the city's position, the information that was sent over, as well as our options to appeal to, if you will. So, why don't we go to you, matter manager? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And you're correct, Natasha Vance, our traffic engineer, as well as Jared Elves and Eric Slagel have worked on this project. This goes back a few months, and I think it is probably best to turn it over to Natasha. When we were first contacted, asking for comments, which we provided, and then more recently, provided a written communication to the Tuxbury Planning Board. And in addition to that, Natasha testified last week ago, Monday, at the Tuxbury Planning Board. So, I do think it may make sense to just turn it over to Natasha for her outline of the project, our involvement, what our concerns were and still are, and where we go from here. I think that makes sense. So, maybe you can walk us through, as the manager indicated. Communication started with you and the Tuxbury Planning Board back in January, when we first, when you or the city first received the proposed project?
Yes, so, thank you, Councilor Elliott, and hello to everyone. It's nice to see everybody. It seems like it's been a long time. Yeah, so in January of 2020, actually, the applicant's design consultant, who was their traffic engineer, reached out to the city and provided a draft traffic information, excuse me, traffic impact analysis study, which I was given to review. I did review it. It did not include a set of plans, nor did it include all of the attachments that came with the report. And, you know, obviously, a lot of the conclusions in the report were based on the analyses that were in the attachments, which I was unable to review. So I did have a list of detailed comments, you know, essentially that I needed more information. So we requested the plans and the attachments. And we did not get a response from the applicants, from their design consultant. We did request it via email and via phone call. And so then, to our knowledge, nothing further was really happening on the project. I would also mention that in the draft traffic impact analysis, the the actual applicant was not identified. So there was no specific industry to look at. It was simply like a generic industrial use, and so there was no specific detail. So it's, again, hard to determine if the trip generation calculations were appropriate based on not knowing what would actually go into the site. So then, a few weeks ago, the question was raised that apparently the project had been, continued to move forward in the town of Billrica and the town of Tuxbury for their planning board meeting, both meetings. And they were working on, working through special conditions for traffic impacts in Tuxbury and in Billrica. So, we, again, contacted the design consultant. To my knowledge, I did not receive any additional information. So, at the direction of the city manager, I drafted a letter explaining what our concerns were. So, and just for the people at home, I'll just try to be quick about it. But essentially, the draft traffic impact analysis referenced that trucks would be coming off 495 and then coming up Woburn Streets through Lowell to get to the site. And there was a condition being considered by Billrica to prohibit right turns out of the site, which would indicate that all the traffic would then be directed through Lowell. So, there is also a city of Lowell Park, Ducheren Park, right there. And there's a crosswalk right there that I've already received, prior to this, had some, residents had some concerns about the difficulty crossing Woburn Street due to the speed and volume of traffic already. So we had increased some signage there. But, so I drafted a letter, which you all have a copy of. In essence, I noted that there seemed to be some issues with, there were some factual inaccuracies in the report. Not major things, but just like the wrong speed limit, things like that. I did also get peer review reports from the town of Tuxbury and from Billrica. So two firms, Van Assam Associates and Beta, both very good traffic engineers, who had reviewed the draft traffic impact analysis and had some comments and questions. So, our letter requested of the addition of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the crosswalk that led to the park, some sidewalk improvements, and just some clarification as to who was actually going to be occupying the site, when final occupancy would be, and because one of the things they referenced is that a traffic signal could be warranted at the entrance to the site, but it wasn't warranted based on initial occupancy, but that it could be warranted on final occupancy. And it wasn't clear what the timeline was. So I drafted the letter, submitted it to the town of Tuxbury's planning board, and also sent a copy to the town of Billrica's planning board. And then, as the city manager mentioned, I did call in and virtually attend and conveyed all of these things. There was a member of the planning board in Tuxbury who noted that the city of Lowell had some concerns, and they also had those safety concerns about the crossing. In the end, they approved the project. They added a special condition, they added some verbiage to a special condition that indicated that they would consult with the city of Lowell. So there's approval from the town of Tuxbury and the town of Billrica for a post-occupancy traffic monitoring program. That traffic monitoring program won't take place until a year after full occupancy. Again, I don't know what the timeline is for that. I haven't gotten a full response to that. But, a year after full occupancy, there will be a traffic monitoring program where they will evaluate whether or not additional traffic calming measures, and at that point would consider whether or not to have been put a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at that location, or to add some sidewalks. And I've talked for a while. I think that's all of the background. So essentially, they approved the project. And then, so, from the city's perspective, what it seems reasonable that we could contact the applicant, who is apparently, it's a Home Depot Commerce site, and request that they add the rectangular rapid flashing beacon and some sidewalks, just to, you know, in a good faith effort to help the city of Lowell. And the city is also considering whether or not we have the ability to appeal the decision made by the planning board in Tuxbury based on the fact that the park is in a butter. And I would just maybe turn it over to Jared and Eric to make sure I explain that exactly correctly.
Before we go any further, I'm sure there're gonna be questions on this, but I do have one specific question. We understand that, as I understand, that the recommendations from the city for a rapid rectangular rapid flashing light and sidewalk, et cetera. What about the intersection, both the on and off ramp? In particular, the exit ramp from I-495 North? That is, that's a very, very dangerous intersection, and as it stands now. To add whatever the new number is, how can we proceed, knowing that it's dangerous? It's listed on, listed as one of the highest crash sites in Massachusetts through Mass duty?
So.
Don't we want to make some improvements at that intersection?
So, yeah. Thank you for reminding me of that, Councilor Elliott. I had forgotten. So that was part of the comments, both from myself, as well as from the peer reviewer. That is, those are Mastot, state-owned intersections. So those are, it's all state layout. They, the applicant's design consultant feels that there isn't, it's not an impact to those. So they have not yet applied or submitted anything to Mastot with regards to whether or not, because typically, you have to get a permit from, and what it's called, it has a specific name. It's like, it's an impact permit. And essentially, they have to demonstrate to Mastot that the volume of traffic that they're adding to those ramps isn't going to negatively impact them. And so I would agree that that's certainly something that needs to be evaluated. It is something that the applicant is committed to working with Mastot on, and it is in the special permit. Of course, Tuxbury and Lowell and Billrica can't, we don't have any say over what they do at a Mastot location. But, yes, that is another, that was a fact, that was something that was mentioned by the peer reviewers and myself for all of the, all of the communities involved.
I mean, I did see that in the report. I think it was comment 16 or 17, where I know it didn't meet some threshold for
Yeah, so.
crashes, if you will. And of course, that doesn't make them eligible for funding. So I just feel, you know, because of those two items, that it's kind of being ignored, where I think it's much more of a significant issue on the, certainly on Woburn Street. Not to say that the flashing light and the crossing, that's, those should be done anyway. But, even if it's 500 more trips a day, that's just, it's a very, very busy road. And I don't, I don't think we should wait a year, you know, or until full occupancy, whenever that, whenever that
Maybe.
timeframe is to, you know, to, you know, to make an issue work.
I would mention that I believe the applicant committed in their agreement with Tuxbury to doing some design work for those ramps and committing, so I think it was $100,000 in design work. And then, the thought was that perhaps a Mass Works application from the town of Tuxbury to support that effort would, would then be, because of the development, that Mass Works would fund the transportation improvements. There is obviously no certainty to that, but that was something that was discussed at the Tuxbury Planning Board meeting. And it does seem like the applicant is willing to do some design work. But they hadn't committed to doing any actual infrastructure improvements at the 495 interchange. I would, I would also add that they are, the language is a little, is not very specific, but to me, it does indicate that when, when they're at full occupancy, there will be a signal warranted at the intersection of the site driveway, I think it's called Discovery Way and Woburn-Billrica Street at that location. And they will fund a traffic signal at that location. So.
How much do you think the design work will cost, if they're willing to give $100,000?
Well, so, generally speaking, the design effort is about 10% of the cost of construction, is a typical rule of thumb that we use for transportation projects. If it's a major intersection, like if they're redoing the ramps for both of the, off of 495, that could be a pretty expensive project. For a frame of reference, the when, where the Lowell connector meets Gorm Street, that interchange, redoing that interchange, of course, they're looking at potentially a roundabout there, which is more expensive. But that's about a three and a half million dollar project. So, I mean, I think it's probably not unreasonable to think it would be about a million, a million and a half. Or, I would have to see what the full plans are. But, in terms of, right now, I know that there are issues with traffic that backs up on the ramps onto 495 at that location. And it is, it is challenging to merge. And then, of course, one of the accesses actually goes through a city of Lowell neighborhood, like it goes in front of, down a neighborhood street. So, it could be an expensive project.
Yep. Okay, well, I think, you know, there's more development. I mean, there's a train station that's, well, first of all, can, can we all, we're all getting signals. Somebody's getting a lot of text messages, so they could mute their phone. So, I mean, I think that's exactly what the issue is, trying to, I mean, in particular, that intersection in itself is just going to go from that door. So I, I'm sure it's a costly proposition. And I suspected $100,000 was not gonna really be a lot of money in the big, you know, things. So, I think that we, I'm not sure how we approach it, but it's something we should, I mean, it's, there are a lot of crashes now, because it doesn't meet a threshold. But, to me, isn't reason to, you know, not look at it. But, in any event, why don't, I'm gonna, why don't I stop here? And if there's no objection, why don't we go to members of the subcommittee? And I'm sure there are a lot of questions, and we'll go to members of the city council. Although, I know Jared and Eric had some other comments, but if you don't mind, let's let's see the comments or questions that members may have, please. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm glad that, I'm glad we just had this discussion here. As far as the end of the ring, you know, there's very definitely, in my humble opinion, I think you certainly do need some lights there. To get off that ramp and then take a left is extremely difficult at that high traffic, that four o'clock to six o'clock or 6:30, whatever. And, and you're talking about a budget, taking another 2,500, 3,000 dollars. It's bad now, and you're gonna compound that problem. So I think that it would, I think it'd be wise for us to have that. And also, I think that, I've talked to people in that neighborhood, and that's not far from where I live. And I know that it's very congested, traffic is terrible there, and they speak going down Woburn Street. I know that's, you know, people have said that a number of times. And, and we just discussed the possibility of having some you said, Natasha, some kind of signage, which I think that if we can slow traffic down there, I think that could be very helpful. So again, this project, I mean, we have to make sure that that neighborhood is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conway. Breaking up a little bit. Councilor Samaras?
Thank you. I agree with the chairman and Mr. Conway. I mean, first of all, you know, getting off 495, going into South Lowell, in that area there, sometimes it would seem that it's better to go there than to go onto Route 38. But the thing is, I'll go to Route 38, get off 495, because it's safer, because of the lights and what have you, even though there's more, even more traffic. But I think the people in South Lowell, especially on Woburn Street, do have a concern. Natasha, when you was, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on the issue. Are they paying attention to your requests for information, or, you know, are we partners in this? Or are we being ignored at this point?
So, I would definitely not say that the planning board is ignoring us. They, of Tuxbury, they took into account the things that we requested, and they did incorporate sidewalks, although I believe the sidewalks were in Tuxbury and not in Lowell, which they may not be able to mandate something in an adjacent municipality. In terms of having the plans and the attachments and the final traffic impact analysis, I do not have that information. And we did request it. So, I would say that the design consultants did not stay in complete contact with us. It may, it may have been that they were under the impression that they did not need to provide that information to us. I'm not sure. But we did request it, and we did not receive it. And we were not sort of in the, in the room to have the conversations when Tuxbury and Billrica were talking to the applicant. So, which is why I think it might be reasonable for us to reach out to the applicant and talk to them about, you know, there's some simple requests, some, you know, short money, things that are not terribly expensive, like a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, some sidewalk improvements, you know, given the investment that they're putting into this property, which is, you know, they're expanding the footprint, they're adding a number of sidewalks and crosswalks internal to the site. They're putting aside, you know, $100,000 to finance the improvements for the, at the Mastot intersection. They're committing to put in some preliminary infrastructure traffic signal. So, it's definitely, I don't, I wouldn't say that they are ignoring the communities at all. I think they just aren't really factoring in that Lowell will bear some of the impact of the, really maybe the brunt of the impact of the traffic, and we just.
I see, I think you're really, I think you've outlined it very well. I do see Lowell as the, you know, bearing the brunt of the impact. There's no question in my mind. And I think, and I think we're, I think we're being ignored by the applicant. But I'm looking at a point of, perhaps, you know, it should be suggested that because we have the problem of trucks exceeding the speed limit, what have you, if they're not gonna, if they don't wish to be partners in trying to ensure that people in Lowell are safe, that they can plan on having a lot of their trucks stop the speeding or what have you, that we'd have to do what's appropriate. I mean, it's, it sounds like that almost. I think we'd be challenged. And I, and I think we have to make sure, you know, through the subcommittee, is that they understand that we're concerned about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Samaras. So I concur, and I think the valid points, I mean, if the applicant, let's face it, I mean, they're making the investment, and they don't wanna make more investment than they really have to, particularly with sort of an indirect cost like this. But, I think we need to exercise, you know, what rights that we do have. And maybe you're right, Natasha. Maybe it's reaching out to the applicant to have a conversation. Perhaps we can invite them to the to a subcommittee meeting, you know, sometime soon. You know, that special condition that was placed or included by the Tuxbury Planning Board, I think that is, I think it's well intended, and we need to follow up on it and have a working relationship. Because, again, the applicant is in, not within our city limits, and we have beholden to the applicant. But that being said, what about Mass D O P? I mean, you know, I'm just thinking of some intersections where back, traffic does back up. And I'm thinking coming 495 North, Route 4, that's a prime example where the state did step in. I know it was. I know it was a bridge project, but I, I just feel that we need to, we need to develop a strategy to engage MassDOT, to, you know, pay attention and maybe take this peer review study and, you know, how do we get that, how do we get their attention? I suppose is what I'm looking at. So before you go any further, we have a couple of other councils. Council Drinkwater, Council Noon. And would you like to weigh in on any thoughts, questions, Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, project this bit, you know, the applicant should work with, you know, Butter. In this case, the Butter is city of Lowell. And, you know, Natasha being diplomatic, that, you know, the planning board of Tuxbury took in the, the peer review input and/or her input seriously. In this case, I respectfully disagree. I don't think they take and the, the impact that this would have had on the city of Lowell and the resident of Lowell. If they do so, they wouldn't just merely pass it and say, hey, like, a year down the road, you can install the rapid signal and all the other things. As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, the report, Natasha indicated the post paragraph of the report, that this corridor above the average crush, crush rate and the impact in these areas, as you add on to, you know, 2,600 truck, of car, truck, that's going to be even more serious. That impact's going to be on Lowell, not on Tuxbury or Bill Recker. I don't know what else can we do, but I, I agree with you that if anything, you know, get the peer review report and try to get the, you know, the ear of MassDOT to see what we can do to address the, the ramp area and to, to do what we can in that area. So I think, you know, we need to continue work on this before they start the project, before they finish the project. As soon as they finish the project, they can get all about you. And that's, and that's concerned, that's the impact on the city of Lowell and the resident of Lowell, not on, not on Bill Recker, not on Tinkersboro, or Tuxbury, I mean. So, you know, we need to continue work on this. We need to maybe involve our state delegation to try to get the MassDOT support in, in this project because they do need a, an approval from the MassDOT on the, the ramp area, as Natasha indicated. So that's, that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Noon, Council Drinkwater, Mr. Mayor, you have anything? Council Drinkwater, then the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions, but just wanted to say, you know, it sounds like the avenue is being explored of the appropriate ones. And I'll only just chime in to say, to add another layer of emphasis to the two impact points, the 495 off-ramp, particularly the danger of that intersection, and also the issue right now of, you know, cars picking up speed as they approach the playground and the, the danger of that crosswalk just potentially being impacted by even more traffic. I think it's just very serious concerns. I know the residents over there are very concerned. So appreciate that avenues are still being explored to address those. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that's a good point, and I, because I've mentioned, it's, it's a very densely populated neighborhood, that part of South Lowell, and the traffic has been a consistent problem and nightmare. So all the more reason to, to just stay on top of this. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. Can you, can everybody hear me? I'm getting used to this technology here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. No, I just want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for bringing up all these concerns, that council's concerns. We've been getting a lot of calls and emails, all of us on this, and it's a big concern. And I appreciate it because just the speeding is out of control right now with the less traffic over the last couple of months. People just are picking up the speed. And with this project of this magnitude coming through our city into Tuxbury, we have to really take a good, hard look at this and make sure it's safe for everybody on that, in that section of town. So I appreciate everybody's comments, and thank you for taking this up, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know Natasha, you wanted to go to Mr. Slagle and Mr. Els. Do either one of you want to jump in, jump in? And then I would just ask, you know, what is, what's the direction that, that we move? I think, you know, is it the applicant? Is it, you know, our state delegation to let them know about this and ask for their input? To reach out to the governor? So that was a lot, one of, Mr. Slagle, Mr. Els, in that order, anything? Can I go to you, Madam Manager?
I, I don't have anything substantive to provide to the, the subcommittee. I was just here to answer any questions about the kind of appeal rights that the city has going forward, given the situation is a little bit different now than it was prior to the pandemic.
Okay, could you, could you just run through that real briefly?
Sure.
I think that's, I think that's important, not that we want to get in. I think we need to be diplomatic and work with them, but we do have.
For, for planning board decisions, there are two routes which municipalities, which the city Lowell has as potential appeals. The first is, planning boards in adjacent municipalities are statutorily noticed for, for large, for projects like this in a budding town. So the Lowell Planning Board has some rights of appeal. Kind of more importantly, in this circumstance, the city, because of the park, is actually a statutory butter. We, we obtained in a butter's list that, that the applicant got from Lowell's assessors department. It indicates that we are a statutory butter within 300 feet of the project. Right now, the, under the governor's guidelines, the statute of limitations for appeals, which is normally 20 days after the filing of a planning board decision, has been told until the state of emergency is, is over. Right now, we know that will be at least until the beginning of June. It may be longer, but right now, it's at least until the beginning of June. That means that we have some time before our appeal rights will run. The very earliest day that our appeal rights would run for this case would be June 20th. In all likelihood, given the circumstances, it will be longer than that. But it's, we have at least until June 20th. As such, in conversations with other members of the administration, the suggestion would be that we engage the applicant in between now and the time that our appeal period would run, so that we have both, both options in front of us, both a negotiated settlement and an appeal if for some reason the applicant is not willing to engage us. So that's kind of the, the, where we stand, the, the ground on which we're standing for purposes of appeals, because we do own the park.
That's helpful, that's a good layout of the timeframe as well. Mr. Els, anything?
No, I have nothing further to add from what Eric and Natasha said.
Thank you. I know you're boots on the ground behind all this stuff, so I appreciate your effort behind that. So with that, Madam Manager, recap anything because I, I think we have some direction. And I'll be, I'll entertain a motion to, well, what do we hear from you on that? I'll entertain a motion to have the city reach out.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as the council has heard here tonight, and I know before, this has been a frustrating experience, I think, for all involved. You know, going back several months when Natasha was first corresponding with the consultant who represented the applicant, let, let us just say they weren't totally thorough in their follow-up in providing the requested documents that we asked for in order to properly comment. You know, it was a time when we had no idea who, who the company was that was going in there. And so, as Natasha pointed out, very difficult to even comment on, you know, what kind of impact it would be. Now, we do know, at least not officially, but we know through, through reported efforts that it's, that's a Home Depot, and it's a different type of commercial enterprise. So, you know, we, we, here's, here's where we are, as, as has been said. I think the council has made excellent points. There's, it's really threefold. One is to follow up and try and work with the applicant and find out what they're willing to do by agreement. Two is to explore all of our options in terms of an appeal. And as Mr. Slagle has pointed out, you know, given the COVID crisis, that time, we have more time than we normally would in order to make a decision which way to go. And then three, I think, pursuing the Mast dot avenue. That's going to be a very important one. It's their say, it's their call in terms of Mast dot. But I think we could provide a lot of information and insight to Mast dot as they arrive at a decision around this particular project. You know, I think, as I said, the points have been made. It's a dangerous intersection for sure, and there will be an added impact here. And so I think pursuing all three avenues is what would make sense at this point. And then I wouldn't rule out, Mr. Chairman, you know, inviting the applicant to, to the subcommittee. Can't say that they did come, but we, we certainly could do that. I think there is also one other stop in Lowell that they have to make before the Conservation Commission in Lowell. Is that correct, Mr. Slagle or Mr. Els? The applicant?
Yeah, if they are within a jurisdictional area of the commission, then they would need to come. And a jurisdictional area would be anything within, you know, 100 feet of any wetlands, if there's any flood plain or things of that nature. So that absolutely would require them to come before. Typically, the Conservation Commission focuses on issues related to construction methods, making sure that things are not being, ending up in the wetlands and things like that. So it wouldn't necessarily focus on traffic. But it would be a common opportunity.
So, so I think at this point, knowing the, the impact that this would have, it, it does make sense for us to pursue all avenues in, in terms of trying to get a resolution here that's in the best interest of the people of the city.
Okay, thank you, Madam Andrew. I think that pretty much is the strategy moving forward. Any other comments from, from any other members of the city council or staff? Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion that the city manager and chief engineer and everybody else reach out to the applicant and, and set up a meeting. We'll invite him to a transportation subcommittee meeting. But if, if that's not accepted, then, you know, in the past, if you can, you and the manager sit down with, with the applicant, you have the information, you have the tenor of the subcommittee and, you know, majority of the council at this point, you know, to speak on our behalf and come back with, you know, some information on the direction that they're heading into. I, I don't know what your timeframe is, but I like the fact that we have an option to exercise for appeal. Because I, I think that if we don't have a meeting in the minds, then I certainly, thinking for myself, I think that we should exercise that option of, of an appeal. So, and I, and while I, I feel that, you know, there is time because of the COVID crisis, I would prefer to proceed in a little bit more of a timely manner and not, you know, come up to that June 20th deadline if, if that is in effect. So I know that's a long motion, but you, you got all that, Mr. Clark?
I got it all. I thought I noted Council Conway seconding that.
Yeah, he, he is seconding, but I, I think it's part of it. I mean, that'll be the, the first part. And then we can just include in this motion that, that the city reach out to MassDOT and explore the possibility of evaluation, further evaluation and, you know, funding issues and everything that goes along with it. Long-winded motion, but I think we get the gist of it.
We got it.
Okay, motion, motion made, seconded by Mr. Conway. We'll call.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council, Council Samaras?
Yes.
He is.
Members of the subcommittee, anything else you'd like to add?
I'm all set.
Council Samaras, also, Council Conway? All set, good. Well, Natasha, thank you for the communications. Thank you for staying on top of this. Mr. Slagle, Mr. Els, thank you for your work on it. I think we have some work ahead of us. It's good that we're, we are in communication with the Tuxbury Board. And again, I, you know, based upon the fact that they didn't keep that, you know, that special condition to, you know, to the work with the city Lowell, I think that's, I think that's a positive sign. So we're going to keep it a positive note moving forward. Madam Manager, we all set? All set, okay. Thank you, everybody. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn by Council Samaras, seconded by Council Conway. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries. This being extended adjourned, we will call another meeting once we hear from, from the manager and the administration. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thanks. Rodney, we'll see you at the next one, right?
Six o'clock, right?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.